Even get started, I think it's just very encouraging to see so many citizens willing to leave a beautiful day outside to take part in civic activities. And let's start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, all the commissioners are present except for the chair, Ms. Mutertees, and I understand she'll be joining us later on probably. Are there any agenda changes?
No.
All right, well then it's time for the public comment period, and this is for matters that are not on today's calendar but are within the area of consideration that the planning commission might be able to consider in the future. In other words, if you're here for a particular matter today, this is not the time to talk, you'll have your chance a little later on. Do we have any public comments on general matters? So, anything on the consent agenda? Just not. So, the first public hearing is 2001-044, modification to existing permit for the Arnold Black Bear Inn. And our procedures are, the planning department has 15 minutes to make a presentation, and then the applicant has 15 minutes to make the applicant's participation, and then we'll have some public time for public comment on this particular issue. Gina, you want to continue?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, what you have before you today is a modification to an existing plan development permit that was originally approved back in 2001. Project number is 200144, and it happens to be for the Arnold Black Bear Inn. Parcel location is up in Arnold at 1343 Oak Circle. Just a brief description of what we're talking about here is, once again, it's a modification to an existing permit that was approved September 6th in 2001. The modification is specifically to condition 2-8, which prohibits noise-producing activities. The modification will, if approved, will allow activities, noise-producing activities, to occur on the parcel upon approval of an administrative use permit. So, just a little history, the Arnold Black Bear Inn approval was for a five-bedroom bed and breakfast, which included quarters for the innkeeper, and that was all exclusive under a 5,100-square-foot building. The remaining property was landscaped, nice, beautiful landscaped grounds, and it also included nine paved parking spaces with one handicap-accessible space to accommodate the needs of the bed and breakfast as well as the residential use. This is probably a little bit of an old picture, but I did want to include at least a visual of what we're looking at here. Aerial photo of the property, you'll see that the grounds are very nicely landscaped, and you can see the roof line of the building with some additional hardscape on the property as well. Just a little, kind of a little background, the existing permit, condition 2-8, and I'm going to read this verbatim, it reads that no noise-producing activities such as festivals, amplified music, receptions, and group gatherings are allowed under this permit. Conditions are all in place on various permits for the health and safety/welfare of the public and the community. The problem with this particular condition is there's nothing in the public record that leads us to understand why that condition is there. There's nothing that addresses, or I should say, conditions can be applied for specific reasons like environmental impacts, public concerns that are raised during the public hearing process, in addition, and most regularly, agency comments and recommendations. There was nothing in the public record in the original permit application file that led us to understand that there was excessive noise concerns by any agencies, matters of the public or anything, which was a little puzzling, couldn't quite figure out where that condition came from. The only thing that we concluded was perhaps because there wasn't another ordinance in place to actually regulate noise, maybe this was the only way to do that. Knowing that we've got a condition that actually limits the uses at the particular site, the applicants and landowners came in actually and requested a modification to change that condition, specifically to read, "All noise-producing activities such as festivals, amplified music, receptions, and group gatherings may be permitted upon approval of a special events permit pursuant to Chapter 17.87 of County Code." Now, when the permit was approved back in 2001, we didn't have some specific codified code sections that exist today. One of those happens to be special events, and the other one is noise. So, currently, we have a whole section in the code that allows for special events, and those can be approved under various types of permits, temporary permits, administrative use permits, as well as conditional use permits. Those are all regulated, procedures are set forth through Chapter 17.87, and they allow us, you know, to place conditions upon permits limiting impacts to neighboring properties as well as the general public in the community. Noise is further controlled now. We do have regulations that have been adopted into code under Chapter 17.902. Specifically, as I said before, these two code sections did not exist in county code at the time that the original plan development permit was approved back in 2001. So, for every land use, you have to have parking. I'm sure you're all aware with the parking section of the code, it's, leaves us all kinds of different options for different uses and zoning. Specifically, event parking is based on capacity. The owners of the Black Bear Inn have limited their capacity to their facility to 100 persons, although if you actually look at the square footage of the building and the square footage of the grounds, their capacity actually far exceeds 100 people, but they have self-limited their capacity to 100. So, based on 100 people, according to code, they would be required to have 33 parking spaces. Now, the code specifically says that you have to have onsite parking. However, in the special events section of the code, it does allow for provisions. If onsite parking cannot be accommodated, you can have other means to fulfill your parking requirement. One of those might be the ability to shuttle parking from an off-site, an off-site parking space, parking lot. Others might be on-street parking, as long as it doesn't sacrifice the health and safety of the general public. Specifically, we would be looking at whether or not it would cause any issues with emergency vehicles. Or you can have, and/or, you can have an off-site parking agreement to basically use someone else's parking lot. So, in this case, right now, the inn has nine paved parking spaces, far from 33 required spaces. So, as part of their solution to their parking problem, knowing that they can't provide the onsite parking, they have entered into a parking agreement with a nearby property owner known as the Cedar Center. It is a property that is commercially developed with paved parking to accommodate the needs of those, of the commercial development on the site. The parking plan that was submitted by the applicant illustrated 41 parking spaces. However, when I actually went out to do a site inspection, I was only able to verify 28 spaces as actual valid parking places that were meeting paving requirements, striping, that kind of thing. So, with the onsite parking of nine spaces and the 28 actual spaces that they have available to them through their parking agreement, they can, they will exceed the 33 required spaces and have a total of 37 available spaces for the guests of their, of their special So, here is the location of the, of the off-site parking. It is within walking distance of the Arnold Black Bear Inn located at 1258 Oak Circle. This is a diagram of their parking. You'll see that there's illustrated 20 spaces, if you start at the top, sorry, I don't have the pointer, start at the top on the left-hand side, there were 25, 20 spaces that I was able to verify there, going down towards the south. There was 11 spaces that were noted, those are not actual parking spaces, that is road right-of-way, so I eliminated those. The five spaces just beyond that were noted as being approved spaces, you know, they're striped, they're meeting all the requirements. However, the five spaces that are backed by Suzie's Diner, it was a little awkward, I actually found that there was only three spaces. So, here again, it still works, the parking agreement with the property owners actually limits the hours of, and the days of their events to accommodate, so there isn't any conflict between the commercial activity on the properties with the special events. So, let's just talk a little bit about past and present. The current owners, Bruce and Wendy Davison, have owned the property since 2010 and have been operating it as a bed and breakfast. They have also been hosting events of, with a maximum of up to 150 people. That is a current violation of their, of their existing permit. Parking along Oak Circle and Oak Court has been, has been a normal practice with events until the Public Works Department put up no parking signs along Oak Circle. It was at that time that the Davidsons approached us about their parking issue and, which has led us to today, and the request for modification. To date, we have found no record in the, in the county public record for, regarding complaints of the Arnold Black Bear Inn, whether it's parking-related, noise-related, or any other issues, we haven't found any complaints on record of the established business. So, as I said before, they are currently seeking a modification, and they want to be in compliance with, with their permit. So, they have reduced their capacity, as I said before, to 100 people, and they've got their off-site parking agreement to accommodate their parking needs. They've received an overwhelming number of support, we've received well over a dozen letters of support and no letters of concern from any member of the public. There were very few agency comments, two have only resulted in actual conditions of the permit. So, here's a look at the surrounding neighborhood. If you'll notice, the properties located off of Oak Circle, in addition to, in addition to Oak Court, are all zoned commercial. The properties just behind the, the Black Bear Inn are actually zoned single-family But again, we've actually received letters of support from some of those residences that actually board, share a boundary line with the, with the Arnold Black Bear Inn. Obviously, they haven't seen any reason to, of concern in the past. So, under the environmental analysis, we relied primarily on the 2001 initial study and negative declaration, however, we did do an addendum to that neg-dec to address the modification. There were some minor changes in respect to traffic and noise, which we feel that we have addressed. So, in conclusion, the off, the facility and with the off-site parking agreement, we feel that the facility has the accommodations, has, has the ability to accommodate up to 100 people of capacity. In addition, with the new regulations in place and the administrative use permit process along with the noise ordinance that is currently adopted, we feel that, that the modification is justified. In addition, the public health and safety and welfare of the community can be maintained, again, with the addendum to the negative declaration addressing the traffic and the noise issue, in addition to the fact that we have not received any concerns regarding the use of the property. So, all of this, we conclude that we're recommending approval of the modification, finding it to be very minor, and we have no further concerns regarding that if you're willing to consider it.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
The, how is, is the parking as a four o'clock on the day of one of these special events, are there going to be signs at each of these parking spaces saying, "No public parking"? How is this going to be enforced so that people, other people don't come in that are going to do business after four o'clock?
Well, we'll probably let Wendy talk a little bit more about that.
Okay.
I, I believe through our conversation that, that they have parking attendants to ensure that, that their, that their event, their guests to their events will be parking in the locations that are specified for them. And it is also my understanding that we will, they will be parking, using those, that parking lot at the time where the other businesses are closed.
Okay. The other question I have has to do with the conditions that the Environmental Management Agency requested in its letter of March 15th, 2018, and I don't see how that is, those conditions are insured to be included in any administrative use permit, whether it should be something that's in our resolution?
We are actually processing simultaneously the application for a special events permit in addition to this modification. So, pending approval of the modification, we have a special events permit that is ready to be issued with some modification if necessary, or perhaps if it doesn't go in the favor of the Davidsons, not at all, but it is prepared. Those are conditions that will be applied and have been applied to the special events permit specifically.
Well, I guess my question is, what's, what's the guarantee that six years from now, an administrative use permit is being applied for by the then owners of the, of this inn?
Well, of course.
What's, what's our assurance that these conditions of the Environmental Management Agency will be in that administrative use permit?
So, annually, they will be required to come in and apply for another events permit, and they can include multiple events under one permit. So, if they have a whole year's worth of events that have been planned, the Davidsons or any other owner of any venue would come to us with a special events permit application, notifying us in that application of all the events, when they're, when they're being held, you know, numbers of capacity, that kind of thing. At that time, we will treat it just like any other application. We will actually circulate that application to all agencies, just as we did this one, just as we've done all of our other applications, allowing them an opportunity to respond. When it comes to special events permits, we often rely on the previous year's permit as guidance for the current permit. So, we go back, we check it out, we do a lot of, you know, save-as, using the same documents to ensure that those conditions, if they haven't changed, are rolling over to the current permit.
Is there a way, or would it be appropriate, to put these conditions in our current resolution?
For the modification?
Yeah.
I guess I have fear of doing that in the event that something changes. Maybe something will change in the law where environmental health will want different conditions. I don't want to be, I don't want the Davidsons, or anyone else for that matter, to have to come back and keep modifying the, the plan development permit just to satisfy conditions that could be rolled into a special events permit.
So, basically, it's up to the Environmental Management Agency to keep its eyes open each year?
Absolutely.
When a special events permit is applied to, applied for?
Right.
That agency will have to say, "Let's put these conditions in."
Exactly, and maybe things will change.
Yeah.
They might not have the same set of conditions, it might be something different, the law might change, maybe it's not a concern anymore, but we always have that previous year's permit to rely on as, you know, kind of an awareness of what was required the previous year.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I'd like to add to that, just, you know, that the planning department is the one that processes the administrative use permit, so we would be responsible for ensuring that those conditions are, are met and that the other agencies have the opportunity to comment and respond each, each year, or whenever they apply for a special events permit.
Any other questions?
Yeah, yes, a couple. From what you've said, I think I know the answer to this. They have voluntarily limited their number of guests at these events to 100?
Yes.
That, of course, is not in the draft resolution and the draft change to the permit. I'm assuming that's, that's something that will be taken care of if it needs to be with the AUP as well?
Through the administrative use permit process, again, I don't want to put too many restrictions on the plan development permit in fear that something is going to change. They might have the ability to, say for instance, buy the adjacent parcel, merge it with theirs, create this beautiful parking lot, and they've actually got the capacity onsite now, the available space to have a much larger capacity. I don't think that's their, their intent, that's what they've indicated, but you know, they might not be the last owner of the property, they might, you know, someone else might own it one of these days, and maybe they want to have an event of 200 people, and perhaps they've got the means to accommodate the parking. In whatever, you know, shape or form that looks like at the time, I didn't want to specifically limit the plan development permit to a certain number, knowing that the circumstance may change in the future.
Yeah, I assume that if, if an AUP is issued that conditions it to limit it to 100 guests, and things do change, they can come in and get a modification or ask for a modification to the AUP.
Absolutely, or in the following year, they can show evidence that they can actually, you know, have a larger capacity with means of parking, and certainly, we would take that into consideration with the reevaluation of their new permit.
Looking at these conditions that the Environmental Health Department suggested, it looks to me like the first one, you have to comply with the California Health and Safety Code, it sort of goes without saying, doesn't it?
Yes.
And it would seem that the event organizer is going to have to get rid of all the garbage, whether you put it in a permit or not.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to thank you for going out and looking at the parking places. The real world is, is nice to have it intruded into our consideration sometimes and not just look at the paper. But I, as I understand it then, we're just approving the use of the administrative use permit to control the special events here? We are not getting into all the details that, although they'll have to have at least 33 spaces and all this stuff, it's just that that's for purposes of our consideration today. This is how it could work if you had 100 guests, is that basically it?
Right, so, so I provided that all as evidence to, to show that the facility is capable of handling events, but the action today is to modify the plan development permit, which allows them an opportunity to, to, in the future, apply for an administrative use permit. So, right now, their permit limits them and does, does not allow any of the gatherings that they've been having at, at the inn. So, it specifically prohibits group gatherings.
Yeah.
So, by modifying the permit, will allow them an opportunity to at least subsequently come in and apply for an administrative use permit, so we can then evaluate that specific use and, and determine whether or not they should have a permit, or, you know, with conditions applied, obviously, to maintain health and safety of the public and the community. All of those things will be considered during the evaluation or analysis of a subsequent administrative use permit.
Anything else for the permit?
I have a question. It sounds like the Environmental Health Agency has changed the conditions that the original resolution imposed. It had on page 4 of 6 of that resolution, 01-68, it has three different conditions, and the, and this wording now is, is in addition to that, so I'm just not sure why we aren't specifically including these new words in the resolution.
It's probably just an oversight, it's an oversight on my part.
I think this whole thing is a great idea, I just, just not quite sure why that's not included.
So, Environmental Health originally submitted a, a set of conditions that discussed portable toilets, and through our site inspection and through our site inspection, we realized, or Environmental Health realized, that there's actually handicap-accessible bathrooms already located in the Black Bear Inn facility that can easily be accommodated to, you know, can, is offered to the use for guests of the inn. So, portable toilets aren't needed, and so they came back with a revision to the condition, and I must have inadvertently missed the fact that I had already prepared the resolution and that there was a, didn't go back and change it, but I can do that. But I thought that was the only difference.
Well, the Environmental Health conditions?
I'm trying to find it.
The Environmental Health conditions in Taskment 4, that's what you're referring to, those three conditions, really apply to the administrative use permits, those three conditions.
Roman 3, I'm looking at the original, the 01-68.
And the original conditions apply to the construction and operation of the inn itself. We could add a condition that essentially says that all events shall comply with environmental health requirements, something like that, because as Gina pointed out, they will be, they, they could change over time, and they could change based on the number of, of guests that they have for, for events, they could change based on changes in state law or local, local codes. So, rather than have those embedded in the conditions for the Black Bear Inn, we thought it was more appropriate that each administrative use permit, as, as it evolves over time, would be addressed through those conditions. So, these conditions, even though it refers back to the modification, these conditions actually apply to the future administrative use permits. But if you would feel more comfortable, we could add a condition under the, the resolution for the modification to the, to the plan development permit that requires compliance with environmental health standards for subsequent administrative use permits.
Section 3, Roman 3-3, may already do that, as I'm reading it. It talks about you have to comply with section 11370, which raises another question, is that in the Environmental Management Agency's letter, it has a 113700 reference. So, that's two different points. The first point is, is my concern already taken care of by Roma 3-3, where it says the B&amp;B mustn't comply with section 11370, blah, blah, blah. So, I'm wasting my time, wasting your time by even reading it.
Well, that addresses food service.
Okay, all right.
And so, so there are other standards environmental health applies relating to sewage disposal, sanitation, and waste disposal.
So, the, so the Environmental Health Department was reviewing the, the modification specifically to that one condition, and what would special events, being, being the, having the ability to conduct special events at the bed and breakfast, what would that result in? And so, all of the conditions that were originally applied in the, in the original plan development permit, they don't go away, they still exist, so they're not superseded in any way. The only change will be the wording in specifically to condition 2-8. The only change will be the wording in specifically to condition two dash eight.
In, in the procedure, are you?
No, I, I, after that explanation, I still think we probably should add a second instead of just the one item, some references, Peter suggested.
I'll work on some language while we continue with the, the hearing and we can bring that back.
The planning department, in deciding an administrative use permit, if we didn't have the language such as Peter is saying, the planning department could look at recommendations by other departments and say, well, that's unreasonable. We're not going to go along with them. Or where's the discretion in this, in the administrative use permit?
The discretion does lie with the planning director.
Yeah.
And there would have to be a very strong reason why a condition that's recommended by another agency would not be appropriate for me to take it out.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anything else for the planning department? We'll hear from the applicant. Fifteen minutes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you, I hope there's a pen and a piece of paper there. I'm going to ask you to sign in.
Of course.
My name is Bruce Davison and my wife Wendy. And we are the proprietors of the Arnold Black Bear Inn. Just a little history. As mentioned earlier, we bought the inn in April of 2010. We knew we wanted to buy an inn 10 years prior to the actual purchase. We worked in corporate America, saved our money, and we knew we wanted to do this. We looked in Washington State, we looked in Oregon, and we looked in Northern California. And we had very specific criteria, a very specific top 10 list of things we were looking for. And when we found the Black Bear Inn, it was the one that had all of that criteria. And one of those things was the ability to hold events. We knew that it's not really a viable business if we're just doing a five-room B and B. It's, it's kind of hard to, to pay your bills. So when we met with the original owners, they built it new in 2001. They were doing events, right, wrong, or indifferent. They were doing events. Their signage shows that they were doing weddings. And that's how it was presented to us. And certainly no malice on their part, from what we can determine. We, we knew it was zoned commercial. So we never saw the permit. We never saw that there was a restriction on noise-making activities. So we turned the clock forward. And historically, the inn has been doing these events for 17 years. We've always tried to be the good corporate neighbor. The music is off at 10:00. Nothing's ever rowdy. We're always there. As you can tell, we haven't upset any of our residents that live around our property. There's no opposition. There's never been a formal complaint. So essentially, what we're doing is we're, we're doing what we've always been doing. We just found out about it, that you're not supposed to be doing this. So that's why we're going through this process. So we're thankful to be at this part of the process, I must say. It's been a tough year, knowing what we've known with people booking weddings. They book them sometimes two years in advance. So it, you can understand it's a little stressful when we have things on the books and not knowing what the, what the future brings. So we're happy to be here. We're happy that we have all the support of our neighbors, our business partners, our vendors, our friends. And we just feel very fortunate to be at this point in the process.
So I want to talk a little bit about our contract with the clients because we do have a contract for every wedding that we do. And it has inclusions such as the parking attendants, like Gina mentioned. So we do provide parking attendants for every event. We provide the trash bins that are necessary to get the garbage out of the way, not only because it's the right thing to do, but we have bears and we don't want to disrupt that process. So the contract also requires the clients to have insurance. There's a lot of other parameters in there. But it's, it's a fairly tight contract that we've had reviewed by attorneys to make sure that everybody is safe and that the liabilities are as limited as possible. We do not do an event without a contract, period. We never have, we never will. Also, it should be said, in the eight years we've been doing events, we've only had one cancellation of a wedding. So our clients, you know, pay their deposit, they sign the contracts, they abide by the contracts. We withhold a deposit in case there are any issues for the end of the process. Also, with regard to the environmental agency, you know, Paul comes out to visit us every year just to do his regular inspection. I imagine that's when he would also do this further inspection. After he wrote these three conditions, he came to the property and saw that the restroom in the lobby is ADA accessible. I guess it wasn't when they originally built it, but he saw that it is now. And that we have a second bathroom on the property in the building that's also ADA accessible. So I actually thought he might have changed that condition since he saw those things, but they are, they are fine now. The other point, I think, about, and this is what you're going to hear about from a lot of people who are here today, is not only is this great revenue for our business, it brings in a lot of tax dollars for our county. And it supports all the surrounding businesses. So people that come up for these weddings, most of them have never been to Arnold, never even heard of Arnold. So we get to show off our area, they go to the park, they eat at the restaurants, they shop downtown Murphy's, they buy wine, they stay at the lodging facilities in the area. So that is the other big part of it, is we are really marketing the county with our own money to bring people in, and we're happy to do that. And the result is, people have now heard of our county. They will come back, they do come back, they buy property here. So it's a win-win, we feel, for the community.
Yeah, we actually have a, a couple, couples here today that were at events at our inn. And at different times, they were our number one guest in terms of the money they spent throughout the year. And now they are both full-time residents in Arnold. So, you know, it's just, it's just good exposure. And Tim, just to circle back to your question about the parking and the timeline, myself and Bill Poulsen, who is here today, we do the parking for, as parking attendants. And in the worst-case scenario, historically, when there is a concert in the park and that's chains required, which brings out hundreds of people, we had the car show going on, we had the concert going on, we had a wedding going on, and we've never had a problem with the parking. So historically, we've, we've made it work without a problem. And when it comes later in the afternoon, Suzie's is already closed. They're closed by two o'clock in the afternoon, so that's a non-issue. The clock shop doesn't get a lot of traffic. That's another one of them. So very little traffic there. And by four o'clock, it's, it's, it's pretty much, pretty much done. So like I say, we're going off historical, what we've seen over the last eight years since we've been there, and it's always really worked. So, yeah, it's, you know, back to, we work hard to get people to this area. There's lots of benefits of that. If you know the Highway Four corridor up where we are, there's limited venues that do this. There's Sequoia Woods Country Club and there's us. That's typically the two that you're going to go to for events. The park also does a lot of weddings. But we don't have the luxury of a Murphy's. If people come to us looking for a wedding, they want an outdoor wedding because they're outdoor enthusiasts and they want that feel, we lose a lot of those to, like a Murphy's. Because of the, the closeness, everybody's there. People can walk down Main Street, people can wine taste. We don't have those same dynamics up in Arnold. So we have to work just a little harder to get those people up there. But once we get them there, they fall in love with the area and they come back. So there's a lot of benefits from us holding events. Truthfully, if we didn't have to, for a lot of reasons, we, we probably wouldn't. But there are benefits to the community, there's benefits to us, and benefits to those that haven't been here. So that's why we continue to want to do the, do the events. Anything else? I think that's questions.
First, the, the outpouring of letters that we've received is very impressive and, and certainly make the point of the economic benefits of this. The letter that I found key is the letter from your neighbor that's apparently directly behind you. And if that neighbor has no problems with the noise. You know, we've, we've got all the benefits and apparently no significant detriments. Now, pending public comment here, we might hear another side. But I just have the one question on the parking. So say there is an event somewhere else happening on a day of one of your special events, and somebody for that other event pulls in to use one of the spaces there along the, the main row of parking spaces. What's to keep that person from parking there?
Well, I guess there really isn't any, anything to keep people from parking there. I don't know if you know the story of Oak Circle and how we all came about this, but the signs were put up. The no parking signs were put up on our section of the street. And the protocol, I would say, was not followed. There was no traffic studies, there was no this, there was no that. We had an attorney that addressed that, yes, indeed, you can park in a bike lane. And the bike lane is only about 200 yards long. It stops and it ends. There's no parking signs there. So that's how this all came about. We said, we've been parking here, people have been parking for events here this whole time. But through the supervisor, that all happened and they went up. Nobody was happy in town, nobody.
But we abided by it.
We abided by it, even when we couldn't park on the street. We didn't park on the street. That was all this last year.
Now, I'm talking about the spaces in front of the stores. You know, that, that the way this is presented, we, we get the impression that those spaces are guaranteed to be available to your participants. And, and that's, that's what I'm getting at, is how, how does that guarantee play out? How, how do we know that other people won't be parking there when you have 100 people at your?
Well, the two of us will be out there. So I guess in terms of enforcement. And he's Italian, so, you know.
Okay, so, I mean, you would just say, I'm sorry, this is reserved for.
Perfect, yeah.
Tim, invite them to the party.
I'll be sure to come up and park at 4:30 sometime.
There's other areas to park there.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to wait until we get to public comment for others. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. So now we're moving on to public comment. And I'm expecting to hear many public comments. But if you are, if you feel that somebody else has already made your point, you could just stand up and say, I agree. And sit down. But other than that, everybody has a right to five minutes of, of public comment. And, and when you come up, please sign your name. And the time will start after you've signed your name.
I'm going to log in as Iagree, because I have to catch a plane. But I have sold homes to their guests. Our clients have gone to their inn, they're excellent neighbors.
Would you state your name, please?
I'm sorry, Beth Harper, Cedar Creek.
All right.
There are seven days a week, including this.
We can't get, this is being recorded. And, and the mic, for better or worse, is the only way of ensuring that your comments are heard, so.
So have a nice flight. But everybody else needs to come up to the microphone. Now, please, sir, you got your turn.
One journo, good morning.
One journo.
My name is Gary Paris. I'm a real estate broker with Cedar Creek. I'm a resident, I have been a resident of Arnold for over 13 years. I've been a property owner in Calaveras County for over 40 years. I listed the Black Bear Inn with the original owners, Kirk and Dorian Swanson, who built the inn back in 2001. The inn has been in full operation since 2001, excuse me, and until recently, never had to comply with parking restrictions. You've already heard that. The present owners, Bruce and Wendy Davison, purchased the inn in 2010. The Davisons have made many improvements over the years and worked very hard to increase their business services, especially special events that require more parking in Oak Circle. You've already heard that. If the county does not allow the proposed modification permit to be allowed, it will be devastating to the Black Bear Inn business and will become a financial hardship for the owners. And I think you've already heard the owner's comment on that. I ask you to please consider approving the modification of permit so this business can continue to bring tourists to Calaveras County and boost the local economy. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Chris Figner. I am a business and property owner in Arnold. My business is lunch lady catering. And we cater most of the weddings and special events at the Black Bear Inn. I know that you've heard a lot about the economic benefits for the area of the Black Bear Inn. But I just wanted to illustrate that if the average wedding at the Black Bear Inn has 100 guests, most of those guests, if not all, are traveling from as close as Sacramento and San Francisco Bay Area to as far as Europe. Really, they do draw a worldwide crowd. And more often than not, the guests are coming for a multi-day excursion to the area. It's not a come for the wedding, leave and go home after the wedding type of venue. We assume that each guest has a cup, is a half of a couple. Then we can also assume that that single wedding probably produces 50 hotel room, vacation rental, or local even campsite stays of one or more nights. If we're assuming that one night, a stay of 24 hours would also be reasonable to assume that stay would result in about 300 meals in 24 hours. 100 people, 300 meals, purchased at our local markets, restaurants, and caterers. So that's a lot of meals, and that's just one day. We can also assume that many more will stay, more than one night, in Arnold as Arnold has become a destination wedding location, thanks in large part to the Black Bear Inn. During extended stay, even of only two nights, the obvious purchases of shelter and meals are doubled. But the instances of retail shopping, state park visits, sports equipment rentals, and gas purchasing increases considerably. People with positive exposure to our area are vastly more likely to return and increase the local economy exponentially over the course of years. Some even purchasing their own vacation homes in the area or becoming permanent residents and taxpayers. My point is, when we discuss granting permits for a business such as the Black Bear Inn, who has been conducting business in the same manner for many years, is in good standing with neighbors in the greater community, we have, we are having a much larger conversation about empowering the economic health of our small town and overall our county. I was living in Arnold during 2008, and I saw the economic downturn. And I saw businesses close their doors. And as I drive through town to my business each day, I see local businesses that are still closed. And I think it is a responsibility to our county to be pro-business and support any business that is in good standing to the best of our ability. And so for that reason, in my 20 years in the county, I would greatly appreciate your consideration for approval of the permit for the Black Bear Inn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Bolton could not be here. She's the Director of the Visitors Bureau. And so I'm going to read her statement. My name is Joanne Stumpf, and I'm also a business owner of Joma's Artisan Ice Cream. Dear Calaveras County Planning Department, the Calaveras Visitors Bureau fully supports Resolution Number 2018-038 to allow events to take place at the Arnold Black Bear Inn in compliance with the Calaveras County zoning code for the following reasons. The Arnold Black Bear Inn is an outstanding local business, having won the Innovations in Tourism Award for Lodging in 2013 and 2017, and winning Best Overall Business in 2013. The Arnold Black Bear Inn, one of the most popular wedding destinations in the county, significantly contributes to local tourism economy. Bruce and Wendy Davison are considerate business owners, on excellent terms with their neighbors, and operate their business with the highest ethics. There has been no noise complaint issued about events occurring on the property. In fact, the CVB only ever hears rave reviews of the business. Many thanks for your consideration. Lisa Bolton, Executive Director, Calaveras County Visitors Bureau. Lisa Bolton, Executive Director, Calaveras County Visitors Bureau. I'd like to also make a personal comment of my experience knowing Bruce and Wendy. Four years ago, when we were thinking of opening Joma's Artisan Ice Cream, because of their previous experience working in business loan banking, we had asked them to be our mentors, and we met with them several times before we opened Joma's. They went over our business plan with us. They made very good constructive suggestions that have really helped us, and they're more than just business owners. They're also contributing members of the community, being on the board of the Visitors Bureau, being on the board of the Arnold Business Association. And I just want to say that they're, you know, more than just your average person. They're excellent mentors and leaders of the community.
At this point, I'd like to point out that, that everybody has a right to speak. But I would like, before, sir, if you could sign in, I'm gonna do something else while you do that.
I can wait.
I'd like everybody here who is in favor of granting this resolution, in favor of the Black Bear Inn, to stand up, please. Thank you. And you all have a right to speak, but you have definitely made your mark by just standing up. Thank you.
My name's Mike Borian. I'm a longtime resident of the Arnold area. Matter of fact, I'm old enough to remember the Blake and Millen operation, which is now White Pines Lake. I've seen Arnold go through a lot of dips. When I was a young man, it was hub of activities. As a young man, we went to Arnold because, well, that's where the young women were. Through the change of our visitors and Murphy's buildup, Arnold's seen a decline. It's through the efforts of the efforts like Bruce and Wendy here that Arnold's on its rebound. I'm here as a board member for GABA, the Greater Arnold Business Association, and our president has written a letter, and I'll read to you briefly. Dear Commissioners, the Greater Arnold Business Association supports the planned, planning department's recommendation regarding the subject permit. Approval will ensure that local businesses, residents, and visitors continue to benefit from what the Davisons, Davison's has been doing to our economy, has been bringing to our economy. Approximately 70% of our homes are vacation cabins and rentals. We rely on visitors who inject money into the economy and perpetuate the nature of the family vacation community. Wendy and Bruce, Wendy and Bruce Davison's gala events draw guests who tend to have higher income, average, excuse me, this is way too small type. All my glasses need to be reден. Anyway, Wendy and Bruce's gala events draw guests who tend to have higher-than-average disposable incomes and are willing to spend the whole, spend more while visiting Arnold. So how much do the events contribute to our economy? You've heard that today already. Just ask the operators, restaurants, sporting goods stores, other retail merchants and real estate brokerages about the business they get from the guests at the Black Bear Inn. Their answer will be lots. Please vote favorably, please vote favorably on this amendment. It is good for all concerned. And as a side note, you've heard before, they bring, folks come to the Arnold area who've never heard of Arnold before, and they're amazed by whatever we have, and they become our residents, they buy property, they spend money. In addition, as a member of the business association, we support anything that helps the business community in Arnold, and this definitely does. They have an amazing event, an amazing venue, they've done a lot of work, and I might be talking to them later on about my oldest daughter's wedding next summer. That's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Provide a little structure to this. Is there, is, I understand there are former customers here? Could we hear from one of them at this point? You'll get your turn.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can hear from both Debbie and I, we're former customers that became. We were the best guests year one.
Could you sign, sign in, please?
And now we live in Arnold.
You live in Arnold.
Yeah, and I let the record reflect that I also park cars. So there's three of us that park cars. I'm also an intern. But yeah, and any points I was gonna make have already been stated.
Can you state your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you?
Don Whitaker. But yeah, I think all the points have already been said, that I was gonna say about economic impact. But yes, the DeAngelis and I, we fell in love with the area, we're proud to call it home.
My name's Susan Kelleher, and I'm an event florist. My name, my business name is Sweet Lilacs. So I've been doing event florists for about 20 years. But that was in Indianapolis, sold four of my shops, and then I moved here to California. Three years ago, I opened up my business, three and a half years ago. So I started off three and a half years ago with 10 weddings. The following year, over 50 weddings. And this last year, over 100 weddings between Topeka County and Calaveras County. And so the Black Bear Inn, what I wanted to say is that not only about our industry, our industry has grown tremendously with all the wedding venues across the board, from caterers to florists. We can barely keep up with what's going on here. And I'm in the county, in the Topeka County side, so just to let you know. But 60% of my business is on the Calaveras corridor here. The Black Bear Inn, one thing I wanted to tell you about the Black Bear Inn, it is 10 degrees cooler in the Black Bear Inn than, than in Murphy's. So it's huge for a lot of people. I don't know if people realize that.
It's better to keep the flowers from wilting, too.
That's right, that's right. So we can put those flowers up there for about an hour, other than half an hour right before ceremony side. And also, it's great for a lot of the people that are coming from the Bay Area. They like the coolness. The other thing is that there's a lot of people that are opening up branches, there's a lot of people that are opening up vineyards here. But what the Black Bear Inn does, it has a very upscale lodge site. And that's one thing that's very, very attractive. Between both counties, there is no, no venue that exists that way. So I just wanted to tell you a little about that. Also with the Black Bear Inn, Bruce and Wendy are hands-on. When we arrive on site, they're there to greet us all the way to the very end. And we understand how Bruce loves his garden. So we're very particular about how we place things. So they are a very important part of the wedding industry, just to let you know how, how that is. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Debbie DeAngelis, and my husband David and I became homeowners in Arnold just over a year ago because of the Black Bear Inn. About eight years ago, my husband went online to find a place to take me for our anniversary, came up with the inn. And over the last seven years, we have become some of their best guests. We've had, created a Thanksgiving family there. We have Thanksgiving there every year with a group of people, some that stay at the inn, some that live in the community. We've celebrated my husband's 65th birthday with all of his family from the Massachusetts area. It's a family place, it's a celebration place, and it's the kind of business I want in the community I live in. So please support this modification. Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn.
Hi. I'm Michelle Plotnick. I live in Hathaway Pines. I've lived in the area for a long time, and I would second everything that's been said here. There's, the Davison's have done a fantastic job with the inn, but I want to remind us that what we're doing today, or looking at today, is really a modification to the PD conditions. It is not a permit to have events at that location. So we should be concerned with what might happen in the future, because, you know, they maybe only have another 20, 30 years that they're interested in continuing to do this. And the PD processes has been problematic anyway. So the condition that's there seems quite antiquated, and I think that the proposal makes tremendous sense. And if in the future, somebody else owns the inn, and there are other types of events proposed, or other issues come up, the planning department will always have the opportunity to condition it differently, or to withdraw the opportunity to have special events there. So there's really no downside that I can see. And I just ask the planning commissioners to take a look at all of it and, and realize that most of your concerns will be addressed no matter what happens in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you come up here.
Yeah.
I would point out that if anybody is here in opposition to this action, we want to hear from you, too. Don't be, feel as if you're being bullied into quiet by all this outpouring of positive feelings. Please.
Hello, my name is Karen Bab, and I'm an Arnold resident. I'm not a business owner, and so I'm coming from a totally different perspective. I do have a letter here that was written by one of our friends locally also. However, I feel that almost all of this has already been stated, so I don't think I'll read it. One thing I would just add to the already, all the numbers that are being tossed around is about the TOT. And of course, it's being proposed that that be raised. Currently, I think it sits at 6%. And so they're talking about raising it, which would be wonderful. And the Black Bear already, in terms of the overall TOT revenue to the county, is already a huge contributor to that because of the events they have. So I just want to point that out. But my perspective is really what they have brought to Arnold, for we residents who live there, we're not guests at the inn very often, although they very graciously open the door and host local events, which have been really fun for us. You know, during the breaks between their weddings and things, we'll call and say, can you do this and that? And Bruce and Wendy, they always say yes, and we go to these little intimate affairs that, my gosh, you would think we were just the Astros or something, living it up there, because they do a lovely job. And they're great contributors. They're at everything in the community, they are not absentee people. And for those of us who live there and bring friends there and raise families there, this has been a huge change in just the general feeling of well-being of Arnold. So we, we welcome this, we hope this recommendation will go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I do agree with a lot of all the previous statements. My name is Drew Morris. I have a slightly different perspective to give you all. I am a neighboring contiguous commercial property owner to the Black Bear Inn. And so I think some of the concerns here might be regarding parking. Well, I've been involved with Cedar Center for many, many decades. I have initiated the, and promoted the live concerts in there, starting back in 1997. So I've witnessed firsthand the impact of the live concert series. I was also impact, impacted like someone mentioned, when there happens to be a live concert, and there happens to be a wedding event, there happens to be multiple events occurring within a small radius of Cedar Center, as Cedar Center is the heart of Arnold. There has never been, in all my years, which date back to the early 80s, a problem with parking. You can refer to your nicely constructed parking maps, but in reality, in the real world, we all get along up here. And especially to those businesses that are such great stewards and such great business owners, and are just trying to do what is right. We all get along. I can personally attest that there's going to be more parking available to these folks because of the way they handle themselves. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I am a, I've owned property in the county for more than 40 years, which is amazing because I'm not even that old. But 26 of those years have been owning a home in Arnold, and for the last three, I've been a full-time resident. And basically, it's all been said already. But I wanted to stand here to tell you and to personally thank the Davison's for their perseverance in being community members, following the regulations, and making sure that they are able to be in business. I also want to thank the rest of the, the businesses in Arnold, being somebody that has figured out how to lose money on California real estate. I'm forever hopeful. So that's all I want to say. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Bill Poulsen, and I am a neighbor of the Davison's. I've been in the Cedar Center, I have a business there, Poulsen Glass Studio, and for, I've been there for 31 years, and I'm thinking I'm one of the oldest businesses there now. And ever since Bruce and Wendy have been there, they have sent people over to ours, people that stay at the inn, not just people for weddings and things like that, but people that stay there, come over, the DeAngelises, the Whitakers, and we get business with them. I've made furniture for these people. And I just want to say that there has never been a problem with parking there, and I'm one of the parking attendants. And they have just been bringing lots and lots of business to this, this county. And without being redundant, I just want to say, I appreciate their input here in the county, in the, in the town of Arnold, Arnold, and I recommend that you approve this modification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
My name's Paul.
Now we get, now we really get the parking story, is that right?
No. No, the, the parking thing's not a problem, really. Thanks for considering this. I think it's awesome. And I think that, I understand, Gina, that the application comes up yearly, is that right? That, that someone's looking at this, and, and this could be modified, and it could actually get better. Meaning that the use of this, I, I attend the church there, it's at the end of the road, and, you know, the way that it showed that, I want you to know that when we were attending, I drove by and they were building this building, and I went, wow, look at that. They're actually building something in Arnold as a business, man, that's awesome. And, and, and so anyway, they built the business, and the other proprietors started to run it, and I was going to church, and, and thanks for doing that. I don't want to walk up there, but I just want you to know that cul-de-sac down there, you know, that's where we all park, going to the church. We'd drive by, and I'd go, whoa, honey, look at the cars. The cars on the street, there's something's happening here. And, and, and I got excited about that, because I'm in business 27 years in Arnold. And, and I thought, wow, this is great. And then I met these folks, and I got to go to work for them, and so the facility works because they employ me there. And so did the Whitakers, and I'm gonna work for them, too, pretty soon. And I wanted you to know that, that the truth is, the street is plenty big enough for, well, me to have a whole party there, too. When we drove by and we saw the cars, I went, man, this is, this is Arnold. This is a great place. I mean, you know, and then I found out that you guys have an agreement to park in Cedar Center, and we hold the car show there every year, you know, we raise money to support the business association. And we have 104 cars there last year. I invite you to it. It's the third week in July. I'd like you guys to check it out, you'll love it. We provide food and catering, and we, we do a lot of things there, and, and I just...
This is kind of like going to the Angels Theater and seeing all the commercials beforehand.
So, so Tim. I'm really getting these opportunities. So, Tim, I want you to know that your decision today, in the positive move for this modification, would not only be well-prudent, frankly, you guys could get out of here early. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, unless there's somebody else that'll close the public comment moment with any rebuttal? And do you have, other than thanking your supporters, do you have any rebuttal to what Gina just did not say? Okay. Then is there any questions from the commission of the applicants or Gina? No. All right. In that case, we'll close the public hearing and have discussion by the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend a modification to the resolution?
Please do.
So, where it says be it further resolved on page two, I would add at the end of that, where it says, "Based on the following amended condition," and add "and new condition." And they would add condition number 3-4, which would read, "Special events shall be operated in conformance with state and local health and safety codes regarding sanitation and waste disposal." Does that satisfy the concerns raised?
You're the boss. Sounds good to me.
Wouldn't they have to be, anyway?
Well, they do. I think it just, again, it sort of points to a reminder more than anything. Many of the conditions that we have, in fact, the conditions that were specifically recommended by environmental health have to be met. But I think this is a reminder to the operators, current and potential future, that, oh, that's right, we had to go get environmental health approval for these kind of things. So, sometimes the conditions are there more as a reminder than as something that they would have to otherwise do.
And that would, you know, keep the planning director's discretion powers if somehow environmental agency got out of control and requiring totally unreasonable things, the planning director could bring things back in reality. Is that?
That's possible, yes.
Okay.
Again, I don't think the condition's necessary because we have that authority already under the issuance of the administrative use permits for the special events, but it doesn't hurt to have it in there.
Any discussion by the commission?
Well, it sounds fantastic. I was not aware of the inn. You'll have to get up there and check it out.
We have an open invite.
And I need to say hi to a former friend of a friend of a neighbor, Karen. Kelly is the name. Savory. Thank you.
All right. That's not part of the resolution, right? Okay. So, do you want to present the resolution as?
Absolutely.
Well, hang on a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know that we have agreement on including this new condition. I don't see the point of including things that don't have to be in there. I don't understand what the legal effect would be, if any. And so, I would prefer to keep it clean. And the one that's in there, it says all, this is 2-8, the new condition, says, "All noise-producing activities such as festivals, et cetera, may be permitted." I don't know why the word "all" is in there. I think it should read...
It was actually the same language that was in the previous condition. I just...
Well, the previous one had the word "no." You needed that.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I think it would be, I think it would read better if it said, "Noise-producing activities, comma, including but not limited to festivals, et cetera," would make it clear.
If we kept "all" in and then took out the "may be permitted" upon and say, "Are subject to the approval," I think that was what's going to be my suggestion in that the way this is worded, it sounds that you have an approval of a special events administrative use permit and then some other consideration is given to whether they may be permitted. I think if we just said that "all noise-producing activities, et cetera, are subject to the approval of a special events administrative use permit," it would be cleaner.
You could also change the word "may" to "shall," just to that.
You could do that.
Be mandatory that...
Well, if it were using "shall," I would not say "shall be permitted" because that would imply that I have to approve it. "May be permitted," but "shall require approval."
Well, that's, yeah, that, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at. "Are subject to the approval," or what you just said.
There's many different ways to write this. I would agree that maybe taking the word "all" because that would imply that, you know, you could have a rock concert or something like that, that may actually have an impact on the neighbors. But, you know, again, we're saying they can have noise events. The idea was to eliminate that prior condition so that what they're currently doing is permitted. And to identify that they need to have the special events permit pursuant to the code. So, either way, as Commissioners Wooster or Laddish suggest, I'm comfortable with.
I kind of like what you came up with. Could read, "Noise-producing activities, including but not limited to festivals, amplified music, receptions, and group gatherings shall require approval..." "...of a special events administrative use permit." Or maybe just require a special events administrative use permit would be better yet.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I think it's, I like the "shall require approval." I think that, you know...
I'll leave it up to Peter.
Yeah, I can go either way.
All right.
All right, what?
So, then, it's up to you to read the resolution.
Well, let's see, I scratched it out, wrote it back in, scratched it out. So, are we including the words, are we keeping it simple or are we including the words "approval of"? So far, I've got, "Noise-producing activities, including but not limited to festivals, amplified music, receptions, group gatherings shall be, shall require a special events administrative use permit pursuant to Chapter 1787 of County Code."
That's fine with me.
Sounds good. Good?
So, with that language, oh, and also...
And so, we're leaving out the environmental health, the new condition 3-4, as suggested by Peter?
Well, it's Peter suggested upon prodding from us, but I think, I think at this point...
Kelly wants it simplified. No one else is...
Yeah, we don't need it.
No?
Right. Okay. And one other thing, on page one of the resolution, right at the bottom line, the sentence starts, "Additionally, the minor increase in traffic as a result of special events is temporary and shall be accommodated."
Oops.
Which is kind of a strange usage. I'm taking out "which" and substituting "and."
The very last line on page one of the resolution. Okay. One more time, please.
Additionally, "The minor increase in traffic as a result of special events is temporary and shall be accommodated by way of off-site parking agreement."
Okay. Anything else?
Well, there's a typo that Mr. Laddish didn't catch.
Good comma. Thank you.
I'm going to start the scorecard.
Tim, you missed it. I'm disappointed.
I was looking because you guys were talking about...
Competition.
Let's not tell him.
Are you leaving out MDM up on the... Do you have any further suggestions?
No.
Okay.
Just a comma that Gina already knows about.
Okay. So, is there a motion?
Do you want the recommendation?
Oh, I thought you just gave the recommendation.
No.
Okay. What's your recommendation?
Staff recommends the Planning Commission pass a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-038 approving modification to existing planned development permit 2001-044 approving the change to condition 2-8 based on the findings included herein as amended.
Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution has passed. Thank you all for coming.
And just for the record, this action is final unless an appeal is filed within 15 calendar days.
Sure. 10 minutes enough?
Yes.
10-minute break. We will resume at 10:30.
And Tim, thank you for chairing this morning. Appreciate that. Miguel, it looks like you're going to be presenting for the Appeal 2016-957.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
I submitted a modified resolution that includes an extra sentence that County Council suggested this morning. However, there's a typo on it, so I underlined the typo.
Okay.
Just preemptive. And the appellants have requested a continuance. I believe I emailed, I forwarded that email to the commission. However, the appellants are here if you'd like them to speak to that.
Okay. Would you guys like to address the request for a continuance first?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe we could bring your opinion on the continuance? You have one?
We are winding down the program. And at this point in time, you know, we're, we really no reason to continue these things, you know. I would not continue it more than one meeting. Because once, once we hit June 7th, all cannabis activity is done. We will probably still have appeals that will carry over. If we deny anything, we still have several dozen that we still need to conclude processing. Some of those probably will be denied and they will have a right to appeal. So, we probably will be processing appeals after June 7th. However, there have been several requests to continue these till after June 7th for some reason, thinking that that's might, something might change on that date. The only thing that changed on that date is everyone is supposed to stop cultivating. So, you know, it's within your discretion to grant the continuance if there is, you know, grounds for continuance. But I wouldn't do it just because they're, you know, they want to wait and see what happens on June 7th. We know what's going to happen on June 7th. The 90-day time period for the end of cultivation for the, you know, that was allowed to wind down, you know, lawful cultivation initially closes. And that's the only thing that we know is going to happen on June 7th. So, if the purpose of the continuance is to wait till June 7th, I would say there's no reason to grant it. If there's some other reason to grant it, that's within your discretion.
Okay. Thank you. Is the appellant present? Would you like to come up and speak for your reason for wanting a continuance, please?
How you doing? My name's Ryan McClure. This is my wife, Laura. The main reason for the continuance, well, there's a couple of different reasons. One is the June 7th deadline, which as all of us cultivators are hoping that something happens within the courts to extend this, you know, if it's going to happen through court. I don't, I don't know if that's going to happen or not. Second reason is the ability to have council represent us and invest more money that we've already spent to, you know, represent us even in this matter. So, if it's going to end up, you know, banned on the 7th and nothing happens through the courts, well, then it's all for nothing and we hired counsel to, you know, help us get through this process that isn't going, you know, isn't going to happen anyway.
What part of it would you need counsel on? Where do you see the need?
Well, in the fact that I'm ignorant in most of what the county's fight's been through this whole process. I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm in a corner and don't know the laws and exactly what's allowed and what's not allowed. What, you know, what's asked of me and what's reasonable for that, for that matter.
Have you made any attempts currently to seek legal counsel yet?
A little bit, but it was based financially is my biggest hurdle right now. Obtaining counsel is a financial hurdle for us. So, you know, that's, that's a basis for, you know, the continuance is to generate the revenue to be able to defend myself.
Because, well, all of the claims that are in this list, I can go, I mean, we could go on for hours when we went through the permitting process. And I have date stamps, emails, there's pictures that Calvers County has sent us that aren't even the correct picture. So, I mean, for us to hash it through, if we're going to get through the 7th, that's what we're pushing for because we, maybe, maybe there's a miracle that'll happen. Who really knows? But in that effect that if, we obviously need counsel. We see how this all works. We've never had to do this before. We've been here for almost 30 years, business owners, you name it. But just let alone after you're reading this, there's some things in here that we didn't get notified of in the mail. So...
Some stuff was sent to Oklahoma to our, my in-laws and then we get it after our deadline and we're like, "What the heck is this?" So, there was stuff that was sent to other places that...
So, was your address incorrect on your registration?
No, it's correct.
There's two of them because of the homeowners on the title.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions regarding the continuance?
I have a question. I kind of have a statement. In the letter that they wrote us, it said that they would like to file this appeal to provide evidence of compliance. I would also like to retain legal representing, legal representation during this process. Please notify me when this can be done. I ask that this matter be done in 60 days. This will give me time to retain counsel and person needed to present my case. Thank you. This was received by us February 13th.
Yeah, I lost my sister, her sister, and we had to pay for a funeral. So, if, if the world was ideal, that would be great. But we had some things that had come up that we ended up having to pay for. So, I, I mean, that's the, that's the reason, so...
I'm trying to get a handle. Are you, for right now?
Well, I'm just saying, they've already asked for time. They've already been given this time.
Right.
Now, they're asking for more time for the June 7th date. That's, doesn't really matter.
It's unclear to me just why June 7th makes a difference to your case. Because if you're, are you just saying that, "Well, if, if everything does unravel as it's scheduled to do on June 7th, then there's no point in an appeal?"
Well, if there's nothing, from our understanding from the cultivators, we understand that through the courts, they're, they're going to stop this so-called June 7th date. I don't know if it's true or not, or that's something...
But assuming, assuming that they, the cultivators and whatever litigation is being done, and I don't know exactly what's happening. Assuming they're successful and delay the eclipse of the urgency ordinance, would that, what difference does that make to you?
It's then worth the fight. It's worth the fight to hire the counsel.
And it's worth, and it's worth the fight to address every single one of these things because it wasn't free to us. I spent hours upon hours upon hours and I don't know who sat in there. I think you were in there when everyone stood in lines. We sat down, we submitted. You know, we're not just somebody who just came over here, bought a piece of property, threw a bunch of plants in the ground. We have been long-time people. I've raised my kids. We're good citizens. We've done everything we can to be compliant 100% and never have I shut my gate and I know the police, the sheriff. I'm not hiding anything. I want to address, if I need my legal day in court, I want to address every darn thing in here that's a claim to me that they said they haven't received, that I have proved that they have received. So, that's what's important to me. And if the ban stops and it's done, then it's...
It's futile. It's worthless.
Then it makes no sense. But what if, what if there's something? I've dumped money. We personally have been doing this. We don't hire outside help. We're people that work our tails off. That's why it's personal to me. It's my life and my living. We don't just make a living off of this. It's something we stepped into for personal reasons, not just because we're growing plants to get high. My mother had breast cancer. My sister just died from breast cancer. So, I could go on for days. But what's important to me is that I can represent myself to show that I'm... So I could go on for days, but what's important to me is that I can represent myself to show that I'm a good citizen, I have complied, and I need to prove it if there's a chance that there is not a ban. That's all I care about, is, is some time.
Okay, so I'm going to slow you down for just one second because we need to stay on the continuance. You're given your right to an appeal here to be able to prove all of those things, nobody's taking that away from you. Right now, what we're trying to decide is if there is just cause to continue.
Right.
Okay, so we understand everyone has personal issues, but that doesn't change the process that we sit through here. We have to get through this, we have timeframes we have to move through. In order for us to continue your case, we need a just reason. Your reason in front of us today is that you want legal counsel, correct?
Correct.
Okay, at the same time that you make that statement, you follow it up with, we don't have the finances to pay for legal counsel. So it puts us in a really bad situation making that decision. If you said to us, I've hired legal counsel and I will be here with them on my continuance at the next meeting, I'm sure that you would find that these commissioners are pretty receptive to that.
Well, obviously, we would be. But, but what, what my point is, is we go and invest the money and there's still a ban on June 7th.
I can't change that.
That's, that's my point.
What if?
So what if, that money that I go and retain counsel with right now. You know, if I go and retain counsel and give them their $2,500 or $5,000 retainer, it's gone. And then we're still banned on June 7th. Alls I'm saying is, is please save me the five grand and give me till after June 7th.
We're already in this and the whole.
Please.
We don't have a year to recoup our costs on a new business.
We're out. I mean, it, it, it just, I, I get that it's, it could be used as a waste of time, but it's not that. Has nothing to do with that, I'm tired of dumping money in this thing. But at the end of the day, if I'm going to dump my last, last fight, the last $5,000, at least there's some, some bit of hope at the end of the tunnel.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask you guys to sit down for just a minute, I want to see if there's anybody in the public that wants to comment, okay?
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, you can ask questions.
Do you have today, have you prepared the evidence of compliance that you say you have? Is it ready to be given to us?
No.
Because we haven't seen a thing.
No, and that, that was, the thing is giving part information, then we, then we talk to counsel and then be told we're stupid for handing, you know, certain information over. And I, I just am going off past experiences. It, it, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen in this situation. But every, every time it seems like you go and put, well, that was misinformation, you should have done this, you should have done that. I didn't want to be in that, that situation. So I was hoping that they would be able to take care of it all the time.
Your letter of February, I'm not sure the date, it was received February 13th, says you'd like to file the appeal to provide evidence of compliance. Today's the hearing date, you've had tons of time.
But a lot has changed within the laws and what's been going on on the ban.
I don't want to stand here and present it to you because obviously I've never done this before either. So I would rather have counsel do it. I mean, there are laws that I know of and don't, that I don't know of that, that they do that are expected of us and, and not expected of us. And under the requests, are, are they legitimate requests?
If we were going to, and I'm posing this as a hypothetical. If we were to say, well, we won't give you a continuance till after June 7th, because we'd have to give you a continuance till late June in order for you then to retain counsel and have that counsel prepare and everything else. If we were going to give you a continuance today for a meeting or two, but not until after June 7th, would that be helpful to you, or?
Of course.
Yes.
Of course.
There's only one meeting.
There's only one meeting.
Between now and today.
Okay, yeah.
Because there's a lot of things in here that are time consuming, sitting down and presenting. That I think after, we've never even walked into a meeting like this. And here, I'm sitting here thinking, we have to get a lawyer then. Because I don't know the laws, I don't know the sections, you guys have a full-time attorney sitting there watching your guys' back. So I think it's just wise for us to do that, we, it's, it's money, we, we aren't wealthy people.
It's just a huge loss.
It's a, it's a loss, if the ban goes through, we might as well not even do it. You know, so I, I don't want to put that money out, it's scary.
I'll ask the secretary, but do we have a full agenda for the next meeting?
No, not full. Okay, do you have any other questions or do you?
Well, just come on. Tell me again why the June 7th date.
Tell me again why the June 7th date makes a difference to you?
Because that's when this ban is supposed to be in, in effect. And from our understanding, it's going to be a stop or a stay is what everybody's hoping for through the courts. So that a judge comes in and says it's unlawful to ban it, you know, the whole, I, I don't know what, what all the grounds are and, and the legal terms for it. But as talking with, you know, other growers that are, have retained counsel, you know, with this ban and, and everything, they're supposedly trying to stop it within the courts.
Do you, do you know whether there's a court date that they already have to try to suspend or halt the ban?
There is a court date. There's been a motion for a stay under, under the sequel case to stay the ban. And I believe that it's May 25th. I, I'd have to double check that, but I think that's the date. However, I'd point out that ban or no ban, I mean, there's, there's, the state requires affirmative authorization from the county to cultivate cannabis. So no one's going to be cultivating cannabis anyway, no matter what.
Unless the county is ordered by the court to somehow.
To, to institute a new regulatory program?
Right, there, there might, maybe, there's something that we can hang on to for all of our hard work and our money.
Do you have any further questions?
No.
Okay, now we can go ahead and go to public comment, please. Does anybody have any public comment on the continuance only? Nope, okay. So we will close public comment, and do you have anything further you want to say on that continuance, no?
I don't.
Okay. Do you? Okay. You have any, I mean, there's nothing new that's been said, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners for discussion on the continuance only, we're not discussing the case, just the continuance request. I can start unless somebody else wants to. Okay, so my issue with, with continuing to continue to continue is we, we operated under an urgency ordinance. And everybody knew it was a risk because we had nothing permanent before us. I, I guess what I would need to see was further evidence that there was issues here that they couldn't prevent, present evidence to, because I'm looking at what's on here, and most of these things would be just handing over a document and saying, I was certified by that date, this was done. Even if the, all the other ones were wiped out, the September 7th date that we have denied people on before is still in this. So if they could bring the certificate forward, that would prove compliance. So I'm more leaning towards not giving a continuance today because I think most of this evidence here could be presented to us and be, if they've got, if they've done what they needed to do, and they got the evidence, and they have the certificates of proof to prove that the planning department was wrong, then I think it can be easily cleared up for them.
I agree.
Okay, I, I think I'm in favor of granting a continuance for two weeks. Because I think the applicants came here in the belief that there was something about the June 7th date that would make a difference to them economically as to whether to retain counsel. And I think it's pretty clear that that's not the case. And I also think that that they are, they are in fact capable of presenting their own case. They're just not prepared to do it today.
Okay.
And would be their choice to whether to retain counsel or not. We've had a lot of applicants come before us without counsel, and some of them have won their cases. But that's, that's their choice. To me, if we, we don't have a full calendar on May 24th, and we can accommodate them for two weeks.
We have seven items on that day.
That's quite a few. But rather than proceed with people who are clearly not prepared, for two weeks, I'm, I'm willing to, we can give them the time.
And I, I back up Commissioner Wooster on, on this point. And I, I do encourage, if that continuance for two weeks is granted, I encourage you to really look at this and see whether you need counsel or not. And that's your decision. But I have seen cases come before us where counsel did absolutely no good. And it's, it's the people involved that, that can present the evidence. So it's, I certainly don't want to influence your decision on whether to get counsel, but if we do grant a two-week continuance, take a good look at it. If you're going to need counsel, you better take steps immediately.
Well, the two-week date comes a day before the court date that they're waiting for.
Well, but the decision of the court could be.
It does.
Long time. I, I think, I, I would agree to a two-week continuance on the basis of what Commissioner Wooster said.
I, I would normally oppose the continuance. The reason is the simple fact that you had since February, you told us you were going to have the evidence that you complied. This is May. There's no reason you aren't ready to stand there and show us this evidence right now. But I will agree to the two-week continuance. If you come back with an attorney who says he need, he or she needs two weeks or a month, I'm going to oppose that kind of a continuance. Or if you come back and say you've retained somebody, but that person has a conflict and can't make it that day, I will oppose the continuance. But for today, I will agree to the two-week, to the 24th.
I think if there were other, and I, I understand what all of you are saying, and I think if there were other reasons to need a continuance other than stating the June 7th date, I would agree. I would give them that continuance. But I think that now we're going to be faced with everybody wanting that June 7th date, and it's going to happen time and time and time and time again. And there's seven next week, or two weeks from now, that are going to say, I want to wait until June 7th because there's a hearing tomorrow. And so it's a continuance of continuances, and I'm not willing to set precedence for the next seven that come before us in two weeks that want a continuance. So I'm going to hold firm on, on my decision.
Well, for the record, I think they've also expressed some personal issues involving, was it Mr.?
Sister.
Sister. Sorry, I'm very sorry to hear that. And I think that may have been a factor we should have at least mentioned on the record.
On the appeal letter?
I think it should be clear that we're not setting a precedent that says that June 7th has any significance with respect to any future request for continuance. As far as I'm concerned, it does not.
Okay.
And we're not continuing this past June 7th, just May 24th.
And every case is on its own, in case the world is listening here, somebody comes in two weeks from now in another case and says, oh gee, I want a counsel. Gives exactly the same grounds. I think we're giving public notice that people need to be prepared to go ahead with their hearings. Given your special circumstances, in my opinion, we can give, we should give you a two-week continuance. But it's clear that we're not giving continuances on the basis of June 7th.
Okay, so if we could get a motion?
I would move to continue this matter to May 24th.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, three, two, okay. So you will get your continuance, and you know you'll be on schedule May 24th, come really, really, really prepared. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to Appeal 2016-703, and it looks like Ben is going to be up on this one. When you're ready.
All right. Ben Diamond, Planner Trainee, this is Appeal 2016-703 by Tamara Lister, appealing the denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration application, 2016-703. This site is located out on the end of Story Road in Mountain Ranch. It's a 21, just over 21 acre parcel, and the registration was for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation. This application was denied for failing to comply with requirements of the urgency ordinance, specifically Section 1795.165E of the urgency ordinance as it pertains to protecting the environment for grading after May 10th, 2016, specifically in the portion of the parcel used for cultivation, and it resulted in expansion of the cultivation site. And for violation of the county's grading ordinance and California Fish and Game Code. First review some aerial imagery of the site, starting on May 31st, 2016. Here we can see the cultivation area that was there originally. It's a somewhat amorphous shape, and in the lower right corner, right above the Google Earth logo, it's hard to make out, but there is also what appears to be a small cultivation area down there as well. All of this comes out to be roughly 11,000 to 10,000 square feet of cultivation when estimated using the measuring tools and aerial imagery and the software. On June 9th, we can see the site is still virtually the same, some pots have likely been removed as the dots on the site aren't as prevalent as they were. But no major work's been done in the cultivation area, and it still tends to generally follow the contour of the land.
If I, if I could interrupt you right there. I don't see where June 9th, with, May 31st, we're seeing a lot of cultivation. The June 9th picture, do you think is, is accurate in showing, I mean, it looks like everything's been taken out.
The difference is likely the smart pots from the previous season being removed. Here you see those dots there, those are typically smart pots, and then in the next one, they appear to have been removed, so.
Time out, you have to wait till your turn, we're going to bring you up and you're going to get to explain all of this, thank you.
And it could also be the resolution of the image, they could still be there, but it's also in more the preparation time of the year for cultivation, so.
Okay.
Continuing on, on August 20th, here you can see the pots a little better, so it is likely just the day that picture was taken on June that it was a little harder to make out. And you can see that the site still virtually unchanged from its original state. Then June 2nd, 2017, we can see that a lot of the cultivation area has been cleared. The lower right site has been completely cleared into a pad. And then the other areas on the parcel where cultivation was previously have been cleared over, and two terraces have been installed in their place. And here on June 28th, 2017, it's easier to make out the two terraces with the smart pots on them. And this area compared to the cultivation areas from 2016 did expand the cultivation site by roughly 5,000 square feet. And here on December 12th, this is a photo taken during one of the sheriff's office flights around the county. You can see there's some erosion there on the upper terrace. And on September 15th, 2017, code compliance visited the site, and they observed the cultivation on the terrace. on the terraces as well. You can see there's a culvert opening onto the road there as, then the generator for the well, not housed. And then just the, a closer picture of the terracing. See, it's a pretty steep cut. And then just another shot of the terrace. And here is the other side of that road where the culvert empties out onto. This is Salamander Creek that cuts through the parcel. And on October 30th, 2017, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife visited the site to investigate associated impacts with a notice of forest practice laws that they got from CAL FIRE. And on December 14th, what they saw at the site resulted in a notice of violation being issued to the appellant. And they took some pictures while they were there. Here you can see the vegetation along the stream bed has been removed, and some impaction of the stream bed has occurred. The road with the culvert just goes straight through Salamander Creek, and the culvert was not installed properly, so it just empties directly onto the road rather than back into the stream. And here you can see more of the side of the creek bed there has been cleared and compacted a bit for driving or otherwise just cleared. And here you can see the road where Salamander Creek comes back out from under it. And also, they were cited for garbage and automobile parts sort of within 150 feet of the stream and in an area where it may flow into waters of the state, and they were cited for that as well. Due to those violations, the application was denied.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Ben?
Yeah, I, oh, I'm sorry. The Urgency Ordinance 17.95.165-E requires the cultivators to protect the environment from harm to streams, fish, and wildlife. And we do have the letter from Fish and Wildlife that characterizes various activities as subject to various Fish and Game Code sections. Is there any evidence of actual harm to streams, fish, or wildlife?
Would cite, the notice of violation being issued as the harm because that much grading directly above the creek can and has released a decent amount of sediment into it, and along with the debris in the area that it is, it could very well run into it and may have, given the relatively wet winters that we've had.
So we do have evidence of sediment being released into the stream?
That's why they were, part of the notice violation is for, you know, the excavation and impactment of the stream bed itself.
I believe the photograph that he showed, that showed compaction right along the side of the creek bed, and additionally putting a road across the creek bed without any mitigation measures would constitute harm to the creek.
As well as removal of vegetation along the bed, or side of the creek.
The staff report also refers to a visit by the Fish and Wildlife in relation to a CAL FIRE, notice of violation of forest practice laws. Do we know what happened with that?
Unfortunately, I was not able to get that CAL FIRE violation notice, so I'm not sure what has happened with that.
Thank you.
My concern is that your aerial photographs are from directly above. Clearly, when we get down to the sheriff's photographs, taken from an angle, there's been remarkable amount of grading, and the code compliance pictures also verify that there's been this huge terracing made. But I can't tell from your photographs, I mean, since I have a hard time seeing where the plants are two weeks after a photograph that shows plants and this sort of thing, how do, how do we know, let's say, go to an earlier one? How do I know that there isn't terracing there? Because you show, in that, in the picture that you just showed us from 2017, I wouldn't say, ah, yeah, look, there were those terraces. How do we know that there weren't those terraces in 2016?
I would compare it to, you can see, well, I can see, I'm not sure you can, but the difference between these two, you can see plants crossing through where the fill slope on the upper terrace is. So right below that upper terrace with the smart pots on it.
See, even in this picture, even in this picture, I don't see terraces.
I do.
But then when we see, when we have the picture from the Sheriff's Department, there's clearly terraces. So I guess what you're saying is that the earlier pictures show a growth pattern that if, that couldn't have existed if those terraces had existed in 2016. Is that what I'm getting?
Yes. It's hard to point out in this photo, but you can see a little bit between here, there are pots that cross where the fill slope for the terraces that are installed. Now I will be able to point to it. If you see here, it appears that there's some smart pots going across from the two areas, and they kind of join right about here, whereas in this one, the fill slope has completely segregated the, you know, cultivation area. And in this one, it's very clear that, you know, the fill slope here, back in 2016, had plants on it.
But if you show us the sheriff's thing, then we understand what your 2017 pictures are really showing us.
Yes, and then the 2016.
And then what you're saying is, is those earlier shots, for the plants to appear where they had appeared, they would have been planted on a very steep slope?
Yes, and at this point would be buried.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? No? Okay. We're going to bring you up now, if you can help us out here.
I'm sorry, I do have one other question.
Oops, he has one more question.
The appeal date seems to be late.
Yeah, very late.
Yet, the original denial letter was returned undeliverable, so it appeared that it was never even attempted to be delivered to the address given for the appellant. So they were not sufficiently noticed that they were actually denied. And when they came into the office, that is when they actually found out that they were denied, so that was treated as the date of notice.
The effective date of denial, okay.
And we felt that that failure to deliver the notice was not the fault of the registrant, it was somehow the fault of the post office.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you state your name for the record for us?
Vince Culpepper.
Thank you.
This is my sister, Tamara Lister.
Hi.
She's the owner, so you guys take all the shots at her. I support her.
Excuse me, what is your name? Excuse me?
Vince.
And your last name?
Culpepper, C-U-L-P-E-P-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, I didn't even want to ask about a continuance. I was just here a minute ago, heard everything. I'm not 100% ready. We got the notice, like, basically the beginning of April. My dad died April 7th. I got the death certificate, if you guys would like to see it. I'm not, you know, I wouldn't even say something like that. And then this is May 9th. So I've had basically about a week to get ready to come talk to you guys, with dealing with the burial and.
I can interrupt you for just one second, and I apologize, and I'm sorry for the death of your father.
Yeah.
You are her brother.
Yeah.
She's the registrant, she's the landowner, and you're, what are you to this? Explain this.
I'm just work, I'm a worker.
You're just the worker and you're.
I just help her, it's just a family thing.
Okay, and Tamara, you're giving him permission to represent with you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all we needed. Thank you, sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, no, that's okay, we just wanted clarity.
And you're talking about a continuance, but you have not asked for a continuance. Oh, yes, I would like continuance too.
Did you put one in writing at all, or are you just asking today?
Well, I'm asking today.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all new, like you said, our dad.
Yeah, we're kind of just a little behind, to be honest.
Just getting those.
It's nothing to do with June 7th, uh, date, I don't, we're just literally, I'm not ready, we're not ready. We, they were supposed to serve it by February 14th, something happened in the mail. I don't know what happened, but I got served basically March 30th, which was beginning of, you know, April, he died in, or April 7th, so, you know, just paying for the burial and all that, I dealt with that for a couple of weeks, mourned a little bit. And then now back to business, and here we are. I've only had about a week, if that, so.
Okay. So at this point, instead of having you keep going on and on and on.
Yeah.
I guess what I need to do is address the fact that you're asking for a continuance.
Okay.
Well, our position, I guess, would be the same as it was in the previous item, that if there's sufficient grounds, in your opinion, to grant a continuance, and that's within your discretion, we don't recommend it.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to take your request to the commissioners for discussion on a continuance.
I think this is something that needed to be requested beforehand. You know, I can understand, you heard somebody else get a continuance, well, that sounds pretty good. Do you?
I didn't even know you could get a continuance. I thought this was it, this is what, the date, that's it, bottom of the line. If I'd have known, I would have at least had that week to absolutely ahead of time. I wouldn't have just brought it up.
Stressing on everything and then making sure we were.
Because I had engineers go up there that I paid to look at stuff too. He's in Arnold today, I can't even get him over here.
I took the day off for work. I definitely would have done a continuance.
I'm not fully ready. I mean, whether I lose or not, I'm not ready.
Okay.
I'm not 100% ready at all.
Let me, let me go to the commissioners and see what they think, and then we'll take public comment.
On the continuance.
On the continuance, please.
I'm wondering why you didn't ask about this beforehand. That's what the rules, we have rules, and the rules say you ask for it in advance. If nothing else, it's a courtesy to the commissioners.
Absolutely, I agree.
To the staff. It appears to me that you have some evidence that you want to show us. What else is there that you don't have?
I got the packet that he's got. I just got the same packet that they sent me, the same pictures and everything, just so I could kind of be on board this, of what's going on. This is all I got. Like I said, I didn't, they were supposed to serve me by February 14th, I got served March 30th.
Can you say hi? You're not, you're not at all, right?
I'm sorry, she was. We, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. We were supposed to get the certified letter, but we never received it February 14th, which would have gave me a ton of more time to.
Yeah, I didn't. It wouldn't necessarily give you 10 more times, you realize that, because the date would have been different.
The date would have been sooner?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but we were, like you said, happening in March, our dad was in hospice, that we had to put him in there. He was in there for 30 days, and we were able to go there as much as we possibly could. So we went there as much as we possibly could in Alamo. And his birthday was March 26th, we spent there. He died March, April 7th, we had a funeral April 20th, and we had to come up with $13,000 within a week and a half after he died. And now we're here. I mean, that, that was an honor. I had no idea we can ask for a continuance.
I would ask for it.
Of course I would have, definitely would have done that. I didn't even know, I didn't even know that we were, that the license was pulled, because my, he asked me, did you get a, did you sign for a letter? Because they said they sent you a letter. And I said, no, I never signed it, I never got nothing. And so he said he was going to go up there and talk to him, because the guy had said, yes, I did, yes, I did. And that's whenever he said, okay, well, there was a mess-up, and yes, it was denied, and we're going to have to, and then that's how we're here today. Do we normally send the letters certified?
Yeah, yeah, they're certified.
But now, yes.
Yeah.
We haven't heard from the department about the continuance. Is, what is the minimum time for hearing after an appeal?
So we, the code requires that an appellant file within 15 days.
15 days.
Of the action taken. In this case, they weren't notified, so we extended that as soon as they were aware, they requested an appeal, to file for an appeal. At the time of appeal, per our code, we're supposed to hear the appeal within 45 days. If we don't think we can make that because of scheduling workload, we will request from the applicant additional time. And if they agree to that, then to extend that time for more than 45 days, and I can't remember, this one, did we request that? Were we able to meet the 45 days?
I believe this is within the 45.
So this was scheduled within the normal timeframe of an appeal hearing. So 45, within 45 days from the requested.
How many days has it been since?
Were they, they signed a letter March 29th?
So the appeal was.
39, 40, 41.
March 30th. So it's been approximately 40 days.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay. If you don't mind, I'd like to just, I have to ask if there's any public comment on this continuance? Don't go too far away. I'm not seeing anybody come up. Okay. Seeing no public comment, I will close that, bring it back to the commissioners. You don't have anything further you want to say? Peter, you're good? Okay. All right. So we're going to bring it back for deliberation to the commissioners. Karen, you want to go first?
I'm actually having a hard time with this one, because I don't think they deserved the denial. But on the other hand, I feel bad for them because their father passed away. And so I get part of it, but they didn't even ask for it before today.
Okay, I want to, for clarity purposes, you said you don't think they deserved a denial on the continuance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just making sure, okay. Anybody else?
I guess what it comes down to for me is, they never asked for it before today. They didn't even ask for it until after they presented his case.
Now, it's, my, my discussion. Everyone is, is, the applicants have the burden of knowing the law when they're doing the cultivating. You also have the burden of knowing the procedures of the body that you're appearing before. On the other hand, I understand good faith, if there is such thing, good faith ignorance of the law, I don't, I don't feel that you're, you're applying tactics to muddy our waters.
No.
The problem is, of course, we've already spent a bunch of time on the merits of the case, so for us, we're spinning our wheels here. What, what do you see you would gain from a continuance?
I see a lot.
Because we have that guy coming.
If I would have got served back in the beginning of February, and when I did, I was in a different mindset. When I was in hospice, watching them die every day, trying to spend as much time as I could there, I wasn't in that mindset. I didn't, I just wasn't ready for this right now, I just wasn't there. That's why I'm asking for a continuance. I was, I'm not, I lost, I understand they gave me the 45 days, but I wasn't there. I wasn't there to actually get down like I usually do and see what we got going on and come, and if I'd have known about the, asking for a continuance, I would have been did that, absolutely, because.
I had no idea. I thought we were going to a courthouse in front of a judge. I didn't even know.
And I have, there's things that happened down at the bottom of the creek, you know, that I'm not guilty for. I paid for an engineer to come out and look at it. I can't, I don't have his paperwork here.
When is your engineer going out?
He already went out.
He already did.
He went out back in January.
And he's going to give you paperwork?
Yeah, he said that is not a creek, that's a runoff. That's what he told me, that's his cert, his letter. He said that is not a creek at all, that is a runoff, that hasn't, doesn't go nowhere. That's just what he told me.
Okay, I know, and I respect what you're saying, I just have to stick to the continuance. If we're going to go into the hearing and give you a chance, then we go there. If not, we're talking to continuance.
Yeah, that's what I just want to try and get.
I understand.
Also, the guy who said that he's going to get all that emails together to give to us.
Yeah, that's the same guy, yeah, yeah.
Yes, that he had called and emailed wildlife numerous times, and they never reached them, they never called them back.
I know, yeah, we just wanted.
Okay.
And he said that he'll get a printout of all those papers.
Okay. Okay.
And he said that he'll get a printout of all those papers.
Okay.
I might even possibly get an attorney. I don't know if it's a waste of money or not, you know, I don't know. But I just haven't even, I just wasn't ready. I'm not, honestly, I'm sorry, you guys. I should have, ahead of time, gave you that letter for the continuance.
Okay, so I have to stop you now because we're actually deliberating with amongst the commissioners and I have to.
Oh, okay.
Put you guys on hold. It's okay.
Sorry.
So do any of the commissioners, other commissioners have comments they want to make?
I fully understand his not being there. And the fact we're dealing with the actual applicant was also the offspring of the person who was going through the, this experience. I, I, I think under those circumstances and under the fact that, that we have somewhat reduced time since the actual valid appeal, I think I'm going to have to go for a continuance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bocelli?
Very reluctantly, I will agree to a very short continuance and the same comments I'll, I made earlier. Certainly, I understand the personal issues.
Yeah.
But there's a certain side of this that's just not fitting together. You've had plenty of time. But you come back here with an attorney who wants a continuance or you've retained him and he or she is not available, it's just not going to happen, at least. So.
Yes, sir.
I would agree if I'm in the majority, I'm not, I'm sure I am, to the two, but with that warning.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ooster, you're sitting over there thinking hard.
Well, this is a difficult issue. I, I'm usually not in favor of continuances. And this one was not asked for before because you didn't realize that you could get one.
Yeah.
I understand the personal side of this and difficulty or inability to focus on what was going to happen here. It also sounds to me as if you, you, you have had some people do some work.
Yes.
In response to the Fish and Wildlife Notice of Violation, an engineer. So there may be, there may be things that should be presented to us that you're not in a position to present.
Yes, sir.
Today.
Yeah.
And so I think I reluctantly would also agree to a, a short continuance for those reasons.
This is a tough one, I'll tell you, because I'm sympathetic to your father. But I just feel like we're going to continue to be hit with continuance after continuance after continuance and we're never going to get this job completed. So I, I guess, I mean, I, I know you guys know you had this date coming and I would have jumped through hoops and back and forth to get that documentation and be here and be prepared for today because if we had voted no to no continuance, you still needed to be prepared to present.
Absolutely.
And so I, I guess that's where my holdback is, is that everybody wants to say, I need more time to get my information together, when everyone's given the same amount of time and we've had a ton of hearings that didn't get their appeals. So I kind of have to stand on my position of the, the no continuance. But in that respect, I will be looking for a motion.
I move that we continue this matter to date certain of March 24th, which is going to be a very full day, so I hope you have a very.
Hey, we're going to go May 24th. We're not going to go back till next year.
May 24th. But it is going to be a very, very full hearing date, so we want, we're going to be looking for efficiency in your presentation.
Okay.
Anyhow, I, I move that we continue this matter until May 24th.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, 3-2. You're going to be back here on May 24th, jump through hoops and bring all that documentation.
Everything.
Everything. There's no second shot.
This is it.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll see you on the 24th. Thanks. But I think you, that's good. Okay, so, next item on the agenda is item number F. It is an action item. We are looking to pass a motion to initiate a zoning ordinance and zoning map amendment to consider removing plan development for McQualamy Hill area. And Peter, who's doing the presentation?
That would be me.
All right.
So as you pointed out, this was just a motion to initiate the actual zoning amendment. A little over a year ago, we had a workshop where I presented a number of items on my list of things to do in addition to the general plan. I had helped to take that to the board. That's been delayed. But in the meantime, we're trying to get additional work done. This was the, I believe, the number two priority on your list. And we continue to have projects in the McQualamy Hill area that are having to go through the plan development process, which I think we've all agreed is unnecessary, given the, spilled coffee.
I'm interrupting. I apologize.
Given the, the design guidelines that have been adopted. So the idea would be that we would work to look at the map, identify which parcels the plan development overlay should be removed. There may be reason, and I don't know at this point in time, but there could be reasons that the PD overlay should be retained on what are more parcels if it was approved, say, as an actual plan development where they modified the development standards and those standards are contained within the actual approved plan. I don't know of any of that. I just, we need to do the research still before we say it's all going to be gone. At this point where it's sort of a blanket application of the PD overlay, the intent would be to remove that, create a process in which the adopted design guidelines, design guidelines for the community are applied at a staff level ministerial review process. So, and the only reason they would come before the planning commission would be if there was dissatisfaction with the approval process by me or future planning director on a design review type application. So we need to prepare a map amendment, a text amendment, and a mechanism to apply the design guidelines. And in order to do so under our code, a motion by either the planning commissioner or the board is necessary for me to initiate that work.
Great. Go ahead.
One question. During your process of, of coming up with what you think should be the answer, is there going to be opportunity for public input so that we're not just titillate all the public input after you've come up with your?
Yes, we could, yeah, we could do that. And, and again, this, again, it just initiates the process. There will be, you know, hearings to, you know, go through it, but we will, I'll certainly try to work with the community to make it.
I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I thought the community pretty much weighed in on this already, but when the hearings there would be public comment.
If they were to do a, a map that says, oh, this is not being removed, this is being removed.
Okay.
I think there should be public input before it gets to us.
So any other commissioners have any comments before I go to public comment?
No.
No? Is there any public comment? Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike Delorto from McQualamy Hill. I was on the Community Plan Development Committee when it was first originated in 1970, some or other thing. We were, well, most of us were, maybe not all of us. We were concerned that at any moment McDonald's was going to put a big McDonald's with big Ms. on Main Street next to the hotel in McQualamy Hill. And we thought the only defense was we would put a PD on it so everybody could weigh in on what color the M from McDonald's would be. We put that PD, the board supported it. I also served on the latest, last all, any and all, Community Plan Development Groups. And we experienced over the years that, that extra layer of bureaucracy to get through the PD process kept little people from moving ahead because they had to spend an awful lot of money, an awful lot of time, and have no assurance of what they were going to receive. And if you've been to McQualamy Hill, you can see that, that Google is not moving into McQualamy Hill. It's a nice little community, it's made up of regular people who have nice ideas about what they want to do and want to retain the atmosphere of our town. And they work very hard at it and do well. So it was a very definite consensus of both the committee and the community when we had the outreach and when you came in once or twice, that the PD needs to go. End of story. With the exception of Michael Thine indicated that he wanted to keep his property, which is down on Meowak Trail, on the edge of the, of the townsite of McQualamy Hill. He indicated at that time he wanted to keep PD because PD does give certain opportunities to make higher density or do different things. So hopefully you'll consider that. And I would hope you all support this and move it ahead as it's been years. You know, the idea behind committees is if you don't like what the committee likes, you just keep it in committee, keep it in committee till nobody shows up again. So here I am, the only one here. And, but there are two things that we asked for in our community plan that are unique to McQualamy Hill, maybe not to every place, but the removal of the PD was one. Two things that were in the community plan before identified that in the townsite, the original townsite of McQualamy Hill, the development of parcels or properties would not be required to make unnecessary improvements to the existing roads. We now share roads that are, in many cases, one lane, one and a half lanes, and people get by just fine. And that was a real concern to keeping the atmosphere of the community together. So that was one of the things that was unique in our community plan that I don't know how it's going to have to get addressed. I guess maybe in the general plan as a footnote for McQualamy Hill. And the other thing was, and I haven't, and I will be reviewing it, and if it's not there, you'll have the misfortune of seeing me again, the savings clause in the front of the general plan and the zoning plan, the zoning amendments, or the zoning code. And that, you'll find it on the current one in about the third page back. And one is the grandfather's clause, which says, if you've been doing it for 40 years and now, for, if you were commercial for 40 years and somebody decided an overlay of residential, you continue, can continue to do your commercial until such time as somebody buys and changes it. And then the, you know, the savings clause, those two things. So anyhow, with that, I thank you for your, your time. And I.
Keep going, it's fine. Okay. Thank you very much and thanks for coming today. Okay, so.
Wait.
Oh, Colleen, hi. How are you?
Hi. I had to get up and say something.
Oh, good, I'm glad.
For the end of the meeting.
It's been a long time since we've heard from you.
Been a long time. I've been very quiet.
Use your five minutes.
Okay, no, I don't need five minutes. I don't need five minutes. Colleen Platt with myvalleyspring.com. Good morning, still morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Tim, for bringing up that this is not something that's happening today. It's just a preliminary, you know, getting something started. As Peter said, this is the initiation of a process, right? So according to the staff report, you're only authorizing staff to start moving forward on this issue and to do analysis and documents and schedule a hearing, to schedule a public hearing. So just wanted to emphasize that that's important. You need to do the community outreach before you actually make an action that's going to change the designation on anybody's property, have a hearing. And as Mike mentioned, there are people that do have an exception to that and they want their property addressed separately. And he's the only one here from Oak Hill, which never happens, so obviously these people don't know what's going on. There needs to be outreach done before anything seriously happens on this. So I'm sure you're going to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we would be looking for a motion to authorize the planning department to move forward.
Reading from my script. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, this, this proposal is limited to McQualamy Hill. Does not include Arnold?
Correct.
This is just the McQualamy Hill, yes.
Just McQualamy Hill. Arnold has a lot of work to do. We've started, we had our first meeting. We have a lot of work to do before we get to where McQualamy Hill is. They're way, 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 way ahead of us. We have to wait seven years like they did. So. I hope not, but they're way ahead of us in the process, so this is just for them to move forward.
So I move that the commission directs staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to remove the plan development combining zone for some or all of McQualamy Hill and to create a design review process for the implementation of the McQualamy Hill Design Review Guidelines.
Awesome. Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So 5-0. And Colleen, they did know, Fawn knew about this as well. She's, or, a lot of people knew.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Yeah, they knew.